And so now we'll go into the work session where your stuff is on Scott.
Yep.
Good job.
I made it through a whole meeting without someone saying no. Even though we tabled some big things. All right, you guys wanna do something and then come back?
Power through.
Power through it. All right, well. Yeah, would you bring any treats? I know, right? Thanks. It's Tuesday, you're closed. All right. Let's open the work session. Introduction of the administrative intern, yeah. And I did read my packet, but we already did that.
Yep.
We're ahead of the game here.
So.
I'm looking for my.
What do you need? Need a work session agenda?
Don't you always have the like the.
Oh, no, I didn't do that this time.
Okay, that's fine.
I did a memo instead.
That's fine, I thought I saw it.
So as promised, Megan is here tonight and I have her working on the newsletter for June and a communication plan. I would like some more input from the council on any other items you would like to see her working on, so, or ideas for the communication plan.
Um, so mine was, mine was just going back on, I want more communication. So, I know you can tag team Facebook and Twitter. And I know we don't have a Twitter, but maybe looking into that. Because I know that there's some people who are on Twitter but not on Facebook and some people like both, um, to have that option, um, just to start to see how that goes. And then, um, I spread the word for the Facebook, so I think we got several more likes on the page. I saw it on the electronic sign, like us on Facebook, um, then we can maybe do a follow up on Twitter.
Well, and what was the, the electronic sign was the only place we put the like us on Facebook.
Yep.
That's what we started with. And how much did it go up in like, because I remember I talked to you like a day or two after that. And I told you.
Almost fifty percent. We had a hundred and four and we got like another forty-six or fifty people that liked us.
Just stopped the sign.
So we're.
Now, I shared it to every one of my friends in there. And a lot of them accepted it. So I'll share with those that didn't, I'll do it again.
Yep.
But, um, can we put the five K on Facebook? Like register, I think that.
It is.
Is it?
Mm-hmm. Oh, on Facebook?
No, I just get it show up on my news feed.
You're right.
I can, I can add it to Facebook.
Yeah, I think you should add that, um, for sure, right away, just to get.
Tomorrow.
More people and then I'll send out my favorite email or.
Okay.
You know, I talked to some people at Mayor Moxie on Thursday to. I think we're just kinda lazy on last minute, just registering. Um, Twitter.
We're gonna look into the cost to put stuff on.
I don't think they're charging yet.
Doesn't cost anything on Facebook unless we boost the page and then it costs us to boost the page.
Okay.
But if I just put it out there as a message, then that was my ear, then it'll go out as a message.
Yep.
Otherwise it's ten dollars every time you boost the page.
Yeah, like you can promote it and then it will automatically throw it as a promotion and force it to people's news feed that may not even like the page.
Right.
Okay, 'cause I know at that one work session we talked about the cost associated with some of that stuff.
Yeah, it turned out that, you know, there was none and.
Right.
That's just if you boost it or promote your page.
Right, with my misunderstanding.
Okay.
Promote your post. And certainly get Megan involved with that too.
Yep.
I get her involved with the electronic sign and designing that. I would, I'd try to get her hands in every single thing that you can while she has time to be here.
And look at what other, you know, I know you looked at some what cities do for communication and maybe get a poll of some more and get some new ideas that we can.
What I was thinking is I could somehow send out a survey or just survey people in person and figure out what age groups and just ask them like, oh, what do you use for communication? Do you use Instagram to take pictures? Because you can just send pictures around on Instagram.
Yep.
Or Facebook or the newsletter, something like that and just poll different people or even send out a random survey.
And I wanna make sure that we ca- you know, like I know some of the older generation aren't on Facebook, so making sure that Kathy gets stuff to put in the thing, so have her post something for the paper about the five K. So when you put an announcement in Facebook, you're covering all avenues. So you're covering Kathy's letter, you're doing a Twitter, a Facebook, and they're all the same message.
Mm-hmm.
And the electronic sign. So then hopefully you're covering a lot of demographics. Um, and then at the same time you can, um, try new ways, you know, like if you have a new resident, you give them a little welcome sheet that says, like us on Facebook, like us on, you know, here, and just different ways they can get communication. And then doing the newsletter again, I read the newsletter. So I always wanted to know what was going on.
I know, sometimes I do, but.
So, you know, I don't know what that cost to mail out. I mean, I don't know how that works. But you can, you know, have the link on, you know, the city website to say, put it on Facebook, say your city newsletter is out, you know, feel free to, and then go to our website to, to check it out.
What other areas are you thinking you want to be involved in, Megan?
Um, well, hopefully with the community garden thing, we're trying to figure out if that's mostly based from Mayor Lucrento.
Okay.
Or how much we're gonna be able to have our hand in that. Because they wanna put it on their land, so we don't really know how much we're gonna be able to be involved.
We've done some research on that, so I think that the next thing we're gonna, her and I are gonna do is meet with Joel Landsbrenner, just to review that with him. Because it's, they're the ones that are gonna have to enter into the agreements with everyone, not the city. So, just if we can help them promote it, however we can do that, so.
Is this internship an open-ended thing? Like, or is it gonna end?
We, we did leave it open-ended, but we could make it end. I mean, we, we said just for this year, with so many weeks, is what we had said. When I got her approved, it was for thirty-four weeks, which takes us through the end of the year. But, um, I'm not sure what her class will be in the fall and, and we've just been very flexible in the time. She doesn't even hear sixteen hours a week because she can't, she's got other commitments she has to be at.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just kind of working it that way. She's coming when she can and I'm giving her what I can give her and, and helping her with that. So I'm hoping that once we start working on budgets, I can get her doing that.
Right.
Laura's is gonna be gone in June. I was gonna show her how to do the Banyan utility billing.
Perfect. Those are the kinds of things I'm thinking.
Personnel, well, I had her put her own name in payroll and set her payroll up. We walked through the, how you do the payroll, um, so, yeah, so that's kind of what I'm trying to do is just let her get her hands on as many things as she can.
My advice to you would be is that one of Luanne's strong suits is financing and creative financing and, um, good returns on investments would be to work with her on that. I'm not sure what your overall career goal is, but, um, she's really got a lot of skills in that. Get as much as you can from there.
Yeah, I just wanna get as much out of it as I can. Um, did an internship with Winstead a couple of years ago and it kinda got cut short because the city administrator had left, like, four weeks into my internship, so, I don't know, this is what I'm hoping to get a lot more time out of.
And then we can just decide where to go from here? Like, we possibly need someone to work part-time or, okay.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
The other thing is I'm gonna, I've got her on the, um, agenda for the EDA and I would like her to come to the park board too. And so that she can, and get some input maybe from them to see if there's some things that they would like to see her working on too.
Yeah, if that's possible, that's, that's all the things that were in my mind, um.
Is there a possibility that she might be able to help move the personnel policy along for the personnel?
I think we're working on that right now.
We just, we just have to get a meeting date.
I followed it to Jerry and Jerry's reviewing it. We're gonna set up some meetings for that.
Okay.
So, but, yeah, that's not a bad idea, but I think that, that might be a little bit of a, it might be a little bit more particular that we really, might be too much for, I guess. Might not be. I don't know.
We'll have to have her look at it. What did she do?
Thirty-four more.
Well, I know, we got such a long list, it's like, yeah, this is more than just a sixteen hour a week thing.
Yep.
But that's good. It's good.
Yep.
It's good to be involved in all the little things and go from there. All right, anything else? Megan, do you wanna say anything or?
I don't think so.
Okay, good.
So I moved a desk or the table from over here that we set the agendas on, she's across from me at my desk. And that's how, she sits across from me in the chair, so that's how we, we do it.
Well, good.
Yep.
Good. Okay, um, parking on Third Street, Scott Iverson.
Yeah. Staff's been approached by both Terry Hartman and Scott Iverson about the parking on Third Street. With the addition of Ruby's to the Third Street business, parking, parking appears to have become an issue for Scott's pattern. Scott's approached staff about people using parking on the north side of the street adjacent to his building. And the issue's been that sometimes he has truck deliveries coming in to unload product and there have been vehicles in the way. Staff would like to suggest some type of signage maybe appropriate to find out if that solves the problem or else council may need to consider adding the parking in the water plant in the near future. So Scott really just wanted to be here to see what, um, and to express concern, Terry's also here and Lainey and Barbara here from Ruby's, how we can figure out a solution to this problem, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's not a surprise to me. It was my concern from the get-go, um.
Is the road really wide enough for parking?
Yep. I don't know if the sign's gonna do it.
You know, yesterday I took somebody out of our garage door. And we can go Saturday, I kicked out three people before I gave up and said, uh, I'm not gonna even, I'm trying to move the equipment out. But, you know, it shouldn't be done at my expense, parking trouble. We're parking in front of garages or parking on personal property, uh, and just the attitude of the people and, you know, it became bad when the staff business moved in. And then when the coffee shop, and I don't have nothing against you guys, I wish you guys well, um, it's gotten really bad.
Yeah.
The city doesn't really have parking.
No, but.
It's not just, Snap Fitness or the coffee shop, it's a church, uh, you know, event or a beer bus, you know, and everybody parks everywhere. But the city really should have a parking lot.
But what we have available isn't going to make much of a difference anyway. They're still gonna park there. So first of all, I think a sign is a good idea.
So we put, do you wanna post that block?
No parking.
I did and they're still doing it.
Then we have to get some tickets written.
Right, and we can't write tickets unless the city council has to pass a resolution establishing a no parking zone. And then once they do that, then Jake can write a ticket to people if they're parking there. Okay? So that's what I would think, I would propose that we do. Let's start there.
But it doesn't solve the Ruby's parking issue because they need a place for their people to go to.
Right.
So, yes, Terry.
Well, or fifteen minute parking you could do, or, I don't know, maybe no parking in front of the doors. This side of the street.
I think that the issue that we need to address is when a consumer, any consumer in town pulls up, they have an expectation, now there is parking on Scott's side. They don't know the difference.
Right.
And what Scott has said, has told me is that there's a substantial amount of private property on that side that is, and that's kinda where the problem starts is the innocent consumer comes in, parks, not knowing that whether they're on public property or private. I think it's really important that we find out where the property lies before we start talking about taking away what are potentially public parking lines or, or creating a boundary or something where Scott then or, or, uh, police enforcement can't, can't personally. Because we really don't know now. And I think before we start putting.
Always not knowing where, where it is. We're jumping the gun.
Yeah, and then there's a right-of-way. I mean, there's the road and then there's the right-of-way, so.
Well, I, I don't think Scott has any private property. I think he thinks he does, but I don't think he does because it's, it's zero lot lines. Everything was built right to the property line. So if you look on the car counting GIS, I bet it's all street right-of-way. I would be, I'd be willing to bet.
It's my guess.
If it's right-of-way, then it's, then it's public parking.
But we can still declare no parking.
But we can still declare no parking.
Like in front of the garage, for sure.
The council can still declare no parking or fifteen minute parking or whatever. They can do that, because it's their street to do it on.
It'd be good to know how many spaces we'd be, we would be giving up. So I think Scott has a loading on loading issue when, if there's a matter of losing a couple of public parking slots for buildings, you know, we need to work with Scott to do that. If we're giving up six or eight public parking spaces that, that we need or the town needs, we gotta know that we're giving up six or eight spaces as well. So I think it's, again, it's important to know where the property is before we start giving it up.
The post is about eight inches away from the road. And they did Highway twenty-five.
I'm sure that Martini has.
I know it's sad.
Yep.
Took about four inches away to the, rather.
I talked to Martini in this meeting and he thought it was proved in town that he was probably pretty reasonably clear, at least one corner. I don't know what reason was.
Does that mean he was gonna charge it, charge somebody for it?
Yeah.
Because I just, I don't know that that's the issue. It doesn't matter, uh, the issue is, you know, we have to try to work with all the businesses in town and, uh, yes, I'd say we need that parking lot in, in the park. It'd be nice, it would help. And then do a, a no parking thing for Scott's. That's what I would suggest. He's been there, it's not like it's new and he's coming in and saying, you know, now I want to have some space because it's, they've always unloaded there.
It's, it's gonna get worse too. So that's why I'm, you know, it needs to be addressed. You know, if you add on your building, it's just gonna be worse. There's, uh, a post right now that could be used for parking, uh, that can't be used because of your principles.
So we haven't put the addition on yet. And when you do that, we'll establish more parking. But it's not the amount of parking that's the issue, it's the people that are parking on this potential private property is the issue. If we build another sixty lot parking lot somewhere, there's still gonna be people who.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
And that's the issue that Scott here is concerned about.
Sure.
And I understand he gets, you know, kinda anxious about that, but we need to know if it's private property or public. And if it's private and the signs are up like.
He puts the lights up now.
And then now we have a question of how do you enforce that?
Why does it matter if it's private? Because the trucks have to use the public street to come on. They can't use his property, they have to use the public street. So, I mean, you can park that all up.
They can do that now.
Saying it's public, but.
They can do that now.
Not if someone's parked there though, they can't unload.
Yeah, it's a block before load up. And then you got issues of emergency vehicles, ambulances or school bus coming by, uh.
Well, that the street should be wide enough for.
Are they?
The street should be wide enough for that. Even with people parked on both sides, it should be wide enough for that. But not if a semi comes and stops in the middle of the street to unload.
Yeah. You see, it becomes a one-lane road, it's one of those. If you look down the road, you know, where they got the curb, um, where you have the church or bench, people park on both sides and there's one lane to traffic.
The thing with the, putting the parking lot in the park is, when we first talked about it, we were gonna share costs because Terry was gonna expand and, you know, we had that all figured out. Well, then the expansion doesn't happen and now the city's gonna have to take that on themselves. And it's, it's gonna be benefiting the businesses in the area. I mean, not always bad, but still, it kinda was a hefty cost for us to take because someone, you know, had a business.
I think it's only appropriate to identify what we have for public property, um, and to establish a parking policy for that area. It's no parking in front of the door, it's no parking from the door to the corner, whatever that is. But if there's truly municipal right-of-way there that could be used for two or three parking spots, then we gotta try to utilize that street in the most appropriate way.
Do your trucks come at a certain time?
You go to the streets. Um, but today I have one, some days I got four. Sometimes it's a semi, uh, it's Ellis, they'll be coming this month.
Before eight AM?
No.
Before nine AM?
No, no. Sometimes they're there when I show up, they're waiting, you know? So sometimes they, they pull up and they pull along the side and they sleep the night until I show up in the morning.
Well, we can't.
Well, I know it's not legal, but they do it, you know, so.
Then they can park somewhere else and come back, but.
Are all your deliveries made like by five PM though? Are you closed after five?
Yeah.
So if there was no parking from eight to.
Nine to five, eight to five?
Yes, PM or something, nine to five PM.
You don't think fifteen minute parking works?
Well, what about fifteen minute or ten minute parking?
Fifteen minute parking works for you though? It's, I just, I, I don't.
And not in front of the door.
Yeah.
Like no parking for sure in front of the door.
Well, that's against the law anyway.
Yeah.
You can't block somebody's driveway.
They do so, and I want to sign them.
Yeah.
You know, and then I try to be nice about it and they go, you know, well, I didn't think that, I'm only gonna be here for a little while, you know? Well, it doesn't matter what you think, it says no parking. Now, where do you live? Let me park in front of your garage.
I mean, I'm not gonna.
You just set this line up this week.
Right.
And that was the idea to have.
And there was three cars that were here and I was trying to get equipment out and I couldn't even, I gave up. I was just getting all frustrated every time I'd go into the coffee shop and they were cool, okay, whose car is this? You know?
And I, and I gotta add that, that the owners of the coffee shop, I don't think the coffee shop lobbies the place to sell your enforcement of other parking.
Well, he's just finding.
They're not happy that, that that happens in their lobbies. And I don't think that, that the enforcement of public parking.
Uh, it should be, no, it should be called a serf. I, I would, you know, I just, I don't wanna get into that. But, I, that being said, I, I think there's, we gotta somehow make it a time limited.
Well, if I was a customer, I'd rather have someone come in and say, hey, can you move your car than call the cops on me and get me a ticket.
Yeah, but you don't want, I, I can see the business owner not ha- you know, happy with, with somebody in there.
Sure.
That's upset, rightfully upset at that. You know, I mean, there's gotta be, if, if there's issues with that, we should probably,
Right.
So we ought to somehow stop that because unfortunately, in my job, we see where things like this go bad inside a, inside a business. So I mean, just obviously just trying to keep it respectful.
How many, um, how many spots would they lose if we did from the door, from that big garage door to the alley?
Two, that's probably two.
So I think, that's what I think.
Is that enough? From the big garage door to the alley?
No, that's all we need.
That's enough?
So I think what, the questions you need me to answer is we need to find the property lines, we need to find out how many stalls you're gonna lose, and then you need to be to come back with some options of either no parking in front of the doors or fifteen minute parking or limited time parking of some kind for, for a resolution to the problem. And then you can just do it at the next council meeting. Is that, and we go, we'll just reevaluate it in a few months and see how, how it is.
Yeah, how.
I think that covers everything.
But how long is this, I mean, now that's another two weeks out before we have a council meeting.
True.
And then how long after that, you know, before signs could, could get put up or something? I mean, what?
We can, the county can have them turned around like in a day or two before.
Is there an immediate solution to the problem?
Well, he's got signs up.
So when did you put the, when did you put the signs up? I was curious. But he's saying they're not, and I'm sure people think, oh, that's homemade sign.
Well, I mean, people have to retrain because they parked there before and they really want their fitness on or coffee, so.
Well, the problem with signs is that, I mean, technically that's illegal, you're not, the only person that can enact, enact a sign on a city street is, is the city.
It's not a street, it's on a building though.
Well, you can't put a, you legally can't put up a no parking sign on, if it's city right-of-way.
It's not enforceable.
So, well, it's, it's also, it's illegal.
Yeah.
But I can if it's my personal property that there's parking.
You can't.
It's in, like, it's on his building, like on his garage door. He can hang a sign there.
Yeah, you can hang a sign, well, okay, well.
Oh, you might have to get a, you might have to get a permit.
In the back, on my property, right in the back of the garage door too. I hit him up.
They're parking in the alley too.
Yeah.
So can, can you guys maybe let your customers know that, you know, that it's just where.
Well, we, we can't, where we are, we can't, you know, that, you know, when we're.
And they're busy.
Right.
They don't got time to see where people are parked.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, we hardly, hardly even look up.
Yeah.
So if we could see straight out like at a register, right, even at the front, we can, we could see, but we have to like walk over to look over there to see if people are parked there. And if we're, that.
I don't think it's their job. I don't think it's their job. It could be Snap Fitness people there, it could be.
Right.
For now.
Yeah, there's been events and there's always, so like everything's placed around. So it definitely caught me with the figure of, but I just wanted to.
Terry, is the, is the whole parking lot idea that we had before off the table for you totally now?
No, no, but again, I don't think that there's an issue.
No, it's not, but I'm just, it's, it's kind of a, a solution in, that could happen in some reasonable time. If you added the parking that you were going to add, you know, and then we add the parking that we were going to add and, and try to work out that deal. I think it's gonna benefit your renters.
Work out the terms of that?
Mm-hmm, I know.
But I wanted to keep repeating that point. It's easy to think of this as, of our building or their coffee shop being sort of places, so that's why they park over like that. That's not the issue. They park by Scott's, but it looks like it's public parking. It might be public parking, but it's like.
But this is the first time we've heard of the issue, so, and it happens after.
Well, I think he's talked to.
He's talked to me, that's why it's on the work session, right.
Right.
Well, I can, I can see.
But I mean, in the last couple of months, I mean, this, this just popped up now, right? Because the coffee shop's busy.
Yep.
I think that adding the additional parking down there, especially with, you know, the park of them and the church of them and the pool of them, we, we're not done growing there yet and I think there are several other businesses that, you know, buildings in town that should have business for them, but, right, they, there will be a need for, at some point.
Well, I'm not saying there won't be a need for it, but what I'm asking is, can we get together and, and form that alliance that we had before? Because your, your tenants obviously need more parking too. And then.
Again, we haven't put that.
I understand. I understand.
...inclusion on.
Can we open communication? How do you want me to ask it?
I mean, we're totally open to these, to the concept.
That's what I wanted to hear. I think we need to start talking about it again. Uh, it's, it's, um, it's not an immediate solution, but I think it's something that, I, I know I'm totally not surprised that this happened.
And you've got a contractor that's gonna be in town doing a roundabout?
And that's kinda why, yeah.
Can't we just put it in without curb?
No.
Why?
Because of the hill, there's too much of a hill.
Parked on a hill before.
Well, no, because when you dig the hill out, when you dig it out, you're gonna have erosion issues. Because you're gonna dig into the berm of the hill, make the parking, you were, to make it, so it works.
I just would like to, I mean, I thought we were on the right track there, and, um, I'd like to kinda open up those, those communications again and see if we can partner up and, you know, try to get something done when it's a little bit cheaper. We have crews in town, and if we go together, um, your, your tenants will benefit and, and so will the city in the off hours, you know.
So I think for the next council meeting, I'll come back with the answers to these questions, so you can take some action on the no parking signs or limited parking signs or finding out, you know, what, what you have there to make some action and make a determination.
So for now, he just has to put up with it, or...
There's really nothing else we can do.
Stay calm.
Do you have enough information if you think that you can? I mean, you don't.
Can you park something there and then take up that space? And then move it when you need to? Well...
Yeah, I think he's doing that now. Maybe I can bring a trailer, try to bring new equipment in, so I can make room. So, you know, that's an issue for me to, even both my own stuff.
Right.
I don't know, I'm here for the needs to be addressed, you know, this is just gonna get worse. Uh, while you haven't heard anything before, I just tolerated it, um, and rumbled, but, you know, now that the added business has moved in, it's just overwhelming. And it's gonna get worse if, and Jerry adds on to the front, uh, of the building, if another building business gets put in, it's just gonna be worse and worse. But, like you said, there's, and the city, and the city probably needs parking also. And, you know, there was a school event a couple of weeks ago, while they parked every spot available for everybody, you know? There was nothing for anybody to park. And it's part of the attitude, they had a brand new Escalade parked, you know, and blocked my back garage door, right on my property. So, you know, I don't need a permit to put a no parking sign on my own property.
No.
No, you can call the sheriff's office, and if they're blocking your driveway, that's, that's an enforceable offense.
Yeah, well...
So, I mean, that's just a matter of just calling the sheriff's office.
This is getting such, you know, I'm getting such a bad taste over this. Uh, like, uh, two Saturdays ago, I gave up and I kicked the third vehicle out from my garage door. You know, I couldn't even fund to my, my business.
You can, I mean, you can definitely look at the towing statutes under the, you know, Minnesota traffic code, and you can legally tow those as long as you're provided, you're meeting all the requirements of that, um, you know, that's something you need to do, by all means, take a look at that and maybe get some legal advice before you do it, but you have that ability as a property owner to do that.
It's kind of fine here to bank, set all of the stuff like boundaries.
Yeah, but they're parked on the, on the public street, they're parked on the street, but they shouldn't be blocking your...
Yeah, they shouldn't block a garage door, I mean, I don't know who is...
I think it's because the whole thing looks, it's like Terry said, the whole thing kinda looks like a road. It's, you know, it's all gravel there, right? And...
And it's closed, so they think, oh, I'll just park right there real quick and run in.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree that, that we should find out the, the, some of the background on this, but I'd ask in the meantime that in terms of how it gets enforced, I mean, it's gonna be two weeks of not knowing and no solutions, but not a good situation to have Scott enforcing this by himself in, on private property or even in the street.
Well, it's not fair to him, and it's not fair to anybody else to try to deal with this.
That's the call the sheriff's office, there's a party, you can play and call the sheriff's office. Whenever it's, whenever it's a problem, you call, that's why, that's why we contact, contract with them. Have the CSO come out and take a look at it. Unfortunately, I'm sure they're gonna have the same questions that we have about property lines and what's private property and what's not.
But even if you have a private driveway that butts up to a public street, which everybody does in town, you can still put out, let's say he puts it right next to his building, private drive. Why can't you put that on there?
It's illegal for any, of, anybody other than a city entity or a government entity to put a traffic control vi- device within the view of the road. You can't do that, it's not legal. Is anybody ever gonna come and give anybody a ticket for it or talk to somebody? Probably not. But you can't just go along the side of the road and start sticking, sticking up no parking signs, that's illegal.
No, but what if it says private drive? And that alerts, because everybody knows they're not supposed to park in front of the driveway.
If, if it's on, I suppose it's on the right of way, then you probably could. You wanna put it on your house or your garage door, by all means.
What if, what if we painted the road, what if he painted the tire yellow in front of his, so that people wouldn't park there? It'd, it'd be just like painting the curb, if yellow, you don't park there then. I mean, that might be visual for people to see.
Yeah.
In front of the doors.
Huh?
No, he can't, he can't either.
Well, in front of his doors, so nobody can, just not the whole road, but where his overhead doors are.
Mm-hmm. People definitely should not be parking there at any time.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, I'd like to see an immediate solution to that, and then let's work on, on some other things in the future.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the next council meeting on the eight, eight.
What kind of parking requirements would work for you guys? Fifteen minutes, thirty minutes? You know, is, do a lot of people just run in, grab coffee, and run out?
Most people are quick, most people are, you know, there's, um, I would say more, more than usually the people that want to hang out with their friends. It's for moms, it's for kids, and, you know, but it's never...
The rushes, the rushes.
The rushes of, well, where people are, they're looking for a person, like, I mean, they're parking on the streets, aren't they, we've got that too, if you want.
Sure, yeah.
But, um, but that's where I notice people, but, you know, it's not, it's not an all day, it's not like there's...
But no matter what, it's, they should not ever park in front of his doors.
No.
So, maybe the yellow on the, is not a bad idea.
You just need to call the sheriff's office, it's illegal, you can't block somebody's driveway, that's, that's a tick of the offense, the vehicles will be towed. So if it's there, you just call.
But also, i- if we do, maybe we have to do that and then do the fifteen minute from there to the alley. But I'm telling you, it's one person after the other, I mean, one person leaves, another person gonna pull right in, that's just the way it is there right now.
But if it's a public park, I mean, it would be nice, you know, I mean, if it was, it would be nice to have a couple of spaces, but if it's not, it's not, then, then we, so...
There's gotta be something that we can do that, that's gonna work for both of you guys, that's, there's gotta be something.
It's adding the additional parking to the building and the city. That's the best solution.
And school parking too, then when all of a sudden they know people are parking for the school, then there's a lot of talk too, so, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, people are obviously gonna park as close as they can to the door.
Yes.
I don't care how many parking lots you build.
How healthy you are.
They're taking the first one.
Sure.
So, you know...
It's attitudes that, uh, get problems, you know, like the one yesterday, it, it, there's a sign right on the garage door, no parking. I didn't know if you're open, and I'm just gonna go in through, you know, and all these excuses. Well, the point is, it doesn't matter what you think, it says no parking, you know, it's...
But nobody can control that, Scott, you know, Hartman can't control it.
No, but it's frustrating, um...
I get that.
I, I think if, if it's truly your property and you can prove that, you, you are, you are correct to put a couple cones and maybe a chain across there that say no parking, to block them, but you gotta make sure.
Only problem is, then I can't park there either though.
Well, and that's where you're gonna have to...
Yeah, I know, so...
Use the alley for one of your parking.
I don't know what the answer is.
I don't either.
I mean, I can throw some rubble tires up there too, and line it up with the curb and gutter, you know? But, you know, what happens in the winter time when it snows, that's not the answer. It might be a temporary fix for the summertime, and then I gotta pull right length along sides of my building, you know, to park.
I think the biggest hurdle is training people, retraining people, that they can't do it right now.
Yeah.
And come winter, they'll recognize that we haven't been able to park there, so we can anymore. I, I think we need to, we, we need to try to retrain them.
It's confusing right there, I mean, I have to say, I may, I probably parked not in front of the garage doors, but in that section.
There isn't one?
No. No, like, maybe like a couple of years ago, like, when I had to go to SNAP before, no, no, I parked in a spot and...
Terry, do you, the spots in front of your building, do you own that property that the spots are on?
Where they had in?
Yeah. I mean, is there anything that would prohibit you from putting signs, like, let's say, um, you know, parking for Hartman properties only?
Well, we could do that on our property, yeah, 'cause often there, 'cause when they park there, they're entirely on our private property, so I think that's, you know...
I, I don't think that's true, I think part of the back of the parking lot is out into the street right, right of way.
Yeah, if it's entirely on our property, then I...
I don't think your parking stalls are though.
I think it exists in building, you have to remember to put the addition on that jutted out, remember?
I don't, yeah, I just remember something about that, I don't remember if it was the existing or the new, but, yeah.
I don't know where you're going with that.
It doesn't matter, I guess it, we just need you guys to be patient and try to work together for the next couple of weeks until we can come up with a solution and we'll get it on the agenda, get some action, and try, and try to come up with a solution for both of you, is what we need to do, and make it fair. That's all we're gonna try to do. So, but we request your patience for a couple more weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, discussion on sign permit.
Staff has approached Knuckleheads coming into compliance with the sign ordinance. The business owner immediately, when we had the issues down there before with this, the, um, inappropriate signs, they...
Are you gonna be at your shop tonight, by any chance?
I think...
Can you be at your shop in just a little bit after this and come and just take a peek?
Yeah.
At what you got going on? Is it okay? Come up afterward? Okay.
The, um...
What time do you get done?
Probably in about ten minutes.
Yeah.
The business owner immediately took down the banners to come into compliance, I mean, she did it right away that morning. And then the obscene signs were removed by Tuesday. Many of the signs that the planner identified as needing a sign permit existed before the changes to the sign ordinance was done. They were there, uh, they were there when knuckleheads, or when, not knucklehead, when bootleggers owned it. So the question that staff has for counsel is, do you want me to enforce the sign ordinance? Or since they're in compliance with the banners, they've taken the obscene signs down, are we done? That's what I need to know.
I think if your grandfathered in, you're grandfathered in, but, um, they've put nothing new up, everything was there.
Some of it's got signs that have grown over it.
The new stuff they got permits for though, they already have...
The, the knucklehead banner in the front and the knucklehead sign, yes, they did.
So the stuff that they changed, even though that sign was there, they got a permit for, just like everybody else does?
Except for, well, we'll go back, the knucklehead, the outdoor bar one, maybe, they just changed it from bootleggers to knuckleheads, but bootleggers had it, you know, they have that little outdoor bar in the back, and they've got the knucklehead sign.
I thought that was a banner.
It's a sign, and then there's a knuckleheads one above the grill by the street too, and then that one above is a new one that she put up. So, I don't know, I don't know if they'd be out of compliance with the sign ordinance or not, I just haven't went any further with it. I mean, it's just, I can look at other establishments in town, and there were six or seven signs, banners up at that one. And, um, Schmitty's never got a sign permit for the signs that they put up, so I sent him a packet and told him he needs to send me, or to get that application into me, and he did call last Friday, and he's gonna do that for his sign.
Yeah, 'cause it's not fair to make one person do it and not everybody else.
No, 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 so, but where do I go with this one with, with knuckleheads, I mean...
How, how does a grandfathering work? I mean, it was a change of hands of, I mean, like, do you really get grandfathered in?
They were in before the ordinance.
So knuckleheads was in before the ordinance changed.
Just like that sign on the corner that was Uncle Ron's, that was there before the ordinance changed, so we got to keep it, it gets to stay there. But otherwise, if that sign ever comes down, it's not, it can't go back up, right?
I thought you were saying it was...
Because it's enough kind of sign, that's the reason.
And we have that, do you have that noted, but I also, so then wouldn't help be the same way?
Well, banners are what he had too many of.
He took them down though, right?
Well, yeah, I think.
I haven't counted.
I have, and I think he put one up, but...
I think he put one up that said patio open, but I didn't count to see if he took anything else down. But he will if he go, if he goes and say, hey, everybody's gotta be...
I did, I did go tell him that, so, it's four, they can have four banners.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they're in compliance with that, I, I just don't know what to do with the other stuff. I mean, I'm just inclined, if you guys are okay with it, if we just leave it, because the sign ordinance came into effect April eighth, and they were in business before April eighth, um, up there, when we made the changes to some of it, so... You tell me what you want me to do.
Is that different, so like, if they were in ordinance, do we have not have a banner thing before April eighth?
No. Well, I don't, I think they didn't.
So like, we're enforcing half of it and not all of it? I'm confused.
So you're saying part of the ordinance for, because of the signs was, so that you didn't have so much facing the street.
So much clutter.
And because they have this patio, that's a whole different area, you know, it's almost like they should get one and a half times or something, you know, the amount. Just because you aren't necessarily seeing all those from the street.
That's not what our sign ordinance says.
I know, but...
It's not what the sign ordinance says.
But I think that's the whole purpose of a sign ordinance, is so you don't have so much stuff right there in front of you.
Because in everything, it's just like, like we talked about before, we always make exceptions to every rule. So why have a ordinance if you are making exceptions? Like, I don't know what's the right and wrong.
So that when whatever happens la- two weeks ago, doesn't happen.
Right, right, right.
They need to have a sign approved before they put any, the lady on their building.
Right, so he should have came with a, for a sign permit, right, and they knew that because they've gotten one before.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's a fine line between overhand enforcement and non-enforcement, and I think we all know that there's, somewhere in there is where a lot of cities operate. Um, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, there's signs outside the way they are, don't bother me. The signs that came down, that wasn't concerning, um, had those signs had not gone up, they probably would not have, we wouldn't even be talking about this right now. Um, my main concern is, is what's down is down, and...
It looks okay.
I, I, yeah, it looks so, it looks fine to me, you know, I don't really have input either where I ask.
And the banners bother me, so four is more than enough, 'cause they, they're what look tacky, not the decorative signs and the...
Right.
Things that are more professionally done.
Right.
Yeah, I think there's a def- definite distinct difference in a decorative sign and a banner. And the banner, the banner is...
And they're temporary, it just tells what's coming up, and then it should come down.
The garbage is hanging on the street.
I just don't want it for them to get upset because we made them make all these changes, and we don't enforce it to everyone. And then they're like, well, we just made all these changes and you're not enforcing it, and then they just go put it up and be like, well, you don't really do anything.
But we are, but we are enforcing it, and, and I am enforcing it, but I would take it one step further then and make them, on all those signs that they have on the outside of the building that she identified, there were twenty some of them, that she identified that need a sign permit. That's what I'm asking about.
Oh, I feel those are like decorative, but...
See, we don't address decorative in our sign ordinance either, so...
Right, correct.
I, I don't find...
So that's what I'm asking about, what you want to do.
I mean, if you, I mean, if you, in your, in your patio area where it's not, you know, visible to the public, I guess, I care less.
Like, yeah, banners that you're advertising something, or a sign that says the company's...
But it is visible to the public.
It is to a point.
It has to be tasteful, maybe we need to look at the sign ordinance, maybe...
Well, they, the planning commissioner is reviewing it on the second of June to add the obscene language, so it'll be com- that'll be coming back to you again too, but I mean...
Take notes.
Yeah, I think all those decorative signs, I don't think we need to, but that's...
Then that's subjective too, what's objective.
Yeah, well, I mean...
It can, that's right. You can have some pretty nasty decorative signs.
You know, you got knucklehead sign on the front of the building, but then you got knucklehead's grill, you know, how many of them knuckleheads is there? There's five different signs on that building.
But just say knuckleheads.
But, yeah, so is it, is it a decorative sign or is it a business advertising? I, I do like some of the decorative signs on the side of the building, you know, but when the next one comes, you know, where do you draw the line?
Well, we have the ordinance now, so...
So do we make them take all of them down?
Well, then if you make, you can take all of them down, then you make everybody take them all out, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
You gotta be persistent and...
You really need the sign police, I mean, really?
Yeah, I mean, they, that's, that's what you want.
You don't wanna be the...
Well, apparently, we did.
Well...
Well, we had to on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's forced to happen.
Yeah.
I, you know, I don't think, when you put up a little thing on top of your, their bar there that says knucklehead's bar, or call, you know, whatever, I don't think that needs a permit.
Yeah, I agree, that's...
That metal one or whatever that's new, that might say knuckleheads, that's up higher, that might need a permit. I don't, you know what I mean, and we talked about that one a couple of weeks ago, that, in my mind, that's the only one that I think they should get a permit for. They probably put that up later than...
That's for April eighth.
Yeah. And they did permit for all the other ones that they changed. So, at least we don't have to go back and say, you're not following the ordinance, but just on that one sign. And then they can decide if they wanna take it down, or if they wanna get the permit.
Is that what you want me to do?
I wish I had, I wish I would have brought my pictures. Maybe there's something that, I don't even know if this is fair or right, but maybe there's something that's written in there about size. And if it falls within a certain size, it's...
There's so many square feet of signage they can have, and I think that that sign will put them over, and it'll have to come down.
Well, that's, per...
Per, per business.
That's not fair, because like someone just said, they have this whole big, long business, and, you know, per business.
Face on square footage or something, I think.
Well, then it's, then it's more fair.
I think, I think, I don't know, I have, I'd have to go look at it.
But I'm saying though, if you put up a small little sign that says knuckleheads bar, or outdoor bar, and I don't think you should have to get a permit for it, unless it's obscene.
If your sign ordinance says you should, that's the problem.
And you're not getting... Yeah, so maybe that's what needs to be looked at, that's what I'm kinda trying to stumble and fumble through, is maybe it becomes a size thing, you know?
Let me check on that, okay?
I don't know, it's a size thing, it's almost a location thing, isn't it, I mean, I just, you know, I just don't...
Well, maybe you don't, maybe you don't permit signs that are on the, not, only on the street side.
Yeah.
Maybe that's where you permit signs that are, when it's facing, wherever it's facing the street side and anything else, you don't permit.
But people can see those signs in there, and you don't want someone to...
I know.
Maybe in the back of the building.
Sure, they put something up hanging on the back of that garage, that is not good either, so...
No.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, reasonably, wouldn't be, I don't know.
Reasonably, you?
Yeah.
We'll just decide what that means.
Uh, what do we wanna do then about, do we wanna...
Let me, let me go look at the size and stuff, and let me get a memo put together for you and, and see what I can come up with, okay?
Okay.
That'd be good.
Salt and sand storage.
Kyle.
Yeah, um, when, when I, uh, hold the tree green, try to figure out where the county, a lot of tree green, and see when it was gonna be sold, and we're kinda panicking, so then we just kind of hold the spring, so I think that it's gonna wait for the fall, so we understand. And yeah, I need somewhere to go with my fall. Anyway, I'm going, my plan is to go to straight fall, and it's better if you get inside or, you know, maybe some gate, you know, or maybe forward, and, you know, under earth and over the tarp preferably, but, yeah, I was just kinda...
But, yeah, so just kinda seeking advice from you guys, what you wanted to do. Should I get quotes on salt storage buildings? Should I get, or should I get alternatives or, I-
What do you want him to say?
Temporary thing.
So they, they won't let you have it in there anymore, right?
It's gonna be sold. It's gonna go to auction in the fall.
And I get, and I got more requested for next year.
Being like those fabric buildings.
Yeah, they're typically, yeah, they're easy, they're concrete, you know, they're like actual salt storage, it'd be, you know, concrete sized. So you can mount it up to them and it'd be like a, either a canopy building or I can talk to special construction. Maybe they could figure one out, you know, cheaper than, or, I know they, I had one idea with the shipping, like they have shipping containers within their metal, like metal go for roads. But that really isn't the answer, so, yeah.
Can it go by the water tower?
See, the thing is, I gotta, I just get over, I'll come back up in the draft, so, I'm only one person, so I can't run things around.
Sure. You can't run at the same time?
No, I can. I wish I could sometimes, but, yeah. It's, even if it's just a tour, you can go into the creamery and back. Sometimes I get really troubled with it.
So you want it here? Is that what she was doing?
Yeah, I mean, preferably here would be, yeah, yeah.
More ugly stuff.
So do you want him to, to do, explore some options and come back with some ideas? That's what he wants to know.
So there's nothing that would work in the industrial park if we rented anything, if we?
Nah, it's for salt. You, you don't wanna be decided.
And you'd have the same problem driving back and forth.
Yeah, that's why they're all, when you see like, you're at the same shops and all that.
Yeah, I see the cell phone.
They're all very, yeah, well, they have bigger ones, but they're just always on their own, you know, so.
And do we need it fenced in, like?
We would if we had it here. Yes, that would be another difference. We would need it, if we could run around it, we'd get salt like this.
But you have a fence back there yet, right?
I have. I'm getting the fence put around it. I look at it today when it's, I don't know if I have a, drive that fence. Or I was thinking on the backside of the shop, either, either that, pot or similar.
So then we'd have to pay to have someone come out and put more fence up?
Either, or that, or just have it, whatever building's built, maybe that door is or something on it, so it's a feasible option.
Actually, those fa- fabric hoop houses.
Yeah.
They got, just a roll up door, it's canvas, you roll it, roll it open. I'd look into something like that. Um, typically they can be moved.
Do they hold up in the winter? The weather and the wind and the-
Won't, been down in Oregon, America for years. State's been using them for many number of years.
Is that something you buy, you don't have to build anything?
Uh, they just, uh, most of them are steel hoops. They drill, they mount them on top of those concrete blocks. And then they've got cables that keep them square and- Yeah.
You have to, um, concrete floor shoes?
Yeah.
Is that a blacktop?
Or a blacktop, yeah.
I'm excited you can have one of them.
He's getting those cup of the knuckleheads.
No parking. We have our early sign.
Yeah, I would say more heady surgery.
And come back, okay?
I don't know if they want that up here. I agree with you.
Yeah. But if he can move it, maybe that's what we gotta do. We gotta do what we gotta do for a while. Um, talking about the creamery then, i- is it for sure that it's being sold?
That's what the county will do with it. It'll put it out on, they'll put it out on auction, yes.
Oh, so-
It hasn't been sold?
No.
Can the city buy it if, if it goes to auction?
Sure. Sure.
You're gonna stand there and bid on it?
I might.
For a dollar?
Um, in the meantime, who do we get to clean up the place?
I, I will contact, I can contact the county.
Yeah, they gotta get the weeds down and the fence is horrible.
And the hole in front of the building?
They know about that. They came out and roped it off, so.
What happened?
There's, where the tank was decommissioned, that, the fans caved in.
They dumped a load of street sweepings in there, didn't they?
So should I reduce the bid from a dollar to fifty cents?
Buyer beware.
Okay.
One other thing?
Sure.
Park Board is requesting, um, direction from the city council on their budget and their CIP. So I would suggest that they have a meeting on the ninth. You guys meet on the eighth. I'm gonna suggest that they're meeting on the ninth, that they compile their budget, their CIP as a draft and then come to the, um, June twenty second work session as a joint work session with you guys to discuss their CIP and their, and their budgets. Will that work for everybody? Or we could have them come on the eighth too, but we usually don't do work sessions on the first meeting because, but if that works for the June twenty second, that's what I would propose that we do. Oh, yeah, you will have to.
And then can you just, um, make sure that you send that out to the park board? So that everybody comes prepared with their goals and their stuff and then maybe also let them know about the screen?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, you wanna maybe ask the CSO to, and look at junk vehicles that park on the streets and, and such and all that. What complaint we got far into it was a car that was actually forty, actually, it was on, based on the street.
For how long?
Oh, it was, my neighbor, well, he is now, he got rid of the cars and I just got a crappy truck and a cement mixer and four tires from front of the garage and his dogs still bark. Not at my kids in their, in the backyard, but if they ride the bikes, it's sort of cool. Or if I even walk by, they're barking me all the way down, pretty much to, um, sister's house.
Yeah, and they bark all night too, cause I can hear them all night barking.
You see, you need to call the cops.
Call the cops. No, do it, like, I call all the time.
Anything else?
Mr. Koost is going on vacation next week.
What? Already?
Well, his honeymoon. He's getting married Saturday, so.
Your honeymoon? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I, I gave him the vacation time. I debated whether I really should.
And then Nate's like, "Big mistake."
It's a big lie.
Being happier than the rest of us.
That includes the women. We're adjourned.